We appreciate each of you being here today. We appreciate your interest in the system. A great deal of work, as always, has gone into the preparation of our agenda today. Some work dates back a few months to come to this point today for our board to be able to consider the items that will come before us. We're thankful for the chancellor and his staff and their work in doing this, also the presidents of each college and their staff in the preparation of the all the information required for consideration at our work session last month and meetings since then by all the trustees, and we're thankful to each of you for your efforts. As always, we remain laser focused on student success and remain true to our core mission of education, workforce development, and academic transfer. I know often sometimes folks wonder, why do we continue to repeat those things? But that is our mission, and everything we do should be focused on our mission of education, workforce development, and academic transfer. At this time, I'd like to introduce to you the person assigned to give us our invocation today. He's a very, hopefully a humble man, and someone who much appreciates the opportunity to be here, to be a part of what goes on here. And if you will, I will come to the mic. Ms. Mandy asked me if I would be willing to do this, and I told her I absolutely would, so I'm not gonna do a devotional today or to try to preach to you, but I do want to pray for you. I want each of you to know I pray for you. I pray for you often, and I know you do others. And I pray for all of you involved in the system and what you do, and I'm thankful to God for what you do and what difference you make in our state, in each of our communities. So if you will, bow with me, please. Father, we're thankful for the opportunity that we have to come to you and to bring the things that are on our hearts and minds before you. Father, we're thankful that we can take the burdens of our lives and the things that trouble us and lay them at your feet. It gives us the opportunity for peace, and it gives us the opportunity to, in laying those things aside, to live a life somewhat free of trouble. And we're thankful that you provide that pathway for us. And Father, at this time, I just want to pray for the individuals who labor in this work and for those who are involved in the day-to-day work of the system in each of our colleges. Father, for the trustees, I want to pray for Jeb Shale, John Mitchell, Valerie Gray, for Dust Rogers, for Milton Davis, for Levlin Rome, and Yvette Richardson. Father, I'm thankful for each of these people, and I'm thankful to have been a part of a group that was so dedicated to do the right thing always. Always focused on doing the right thing, doing the best thing, and Father, we know it's never wrong to do right. And I pray that you will bless each of these individuals as they serve in this capacity, and for those that are going to be moving on to the next station in life, Father, I pray that you would grant them opportunity to continue to serve you. Father, give them all good health. Give them all peace and give them wisdom, Father, as they continue to work in this system. Father, I want to pray for Chancellor Baker. We're thankful, Father, for his leadership. We're thankful for what he does on a daily basis. We're thankful that he has assembled a very capable team in the system office to take care and run the business of the college system. Father, I'm thankful for Susan Price and for what she has done for each of us as we have endeavored to learn about the system, and she has helped us so much in doing that as we have attempted to serve in some of us these eight years. Father, for David O'Brien and for Mandy Wilkins, who have managed the board, and they do such a great job of keeping us informed. I'm thankful for them, Father. I'm thankful for the diligence that they put forward in their efforts. I'm thankful for the professionalism. Father, for Roger Bates, who has helped us through some very trying times, and we're thankful for his counsel. Father, we're thankful for the improvement of health you've given him, and we pray, Father, that you will continue to keep your hand on him and those who administer to him. We pray that you will give him full recovery, Father. Father, for the system staff, for everyone on staff who have been so kind and always so willing to help us, who have come from the outside into a profession that we don't necessarily know, but they have welcomed us with open arms and have helped us to learn what it is that we govern. And Father, for the college presidents who host us and who are out there in the community putting boots on the ground, and their staff, their instructors, and all the students. Father, for everyone involved in the program, there's just so many. We know that, Father, there's over 150,000 people that get touched by what we do here annually. And Father, we are so thankful that you're our guide in this, and we're thankful for the progress that's been able to be made, and for everyone who had a hand in it. I pray your greatest blessings on them. Father, we ask these things in your son Jesus' precious name. Amen.
Mr. Stan, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Ms. Wilkins, if you would, please call roll.
Mr. Jeb Shale?
Present.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Present.
Ms. Valerie Gray?
Present.
Mr. Goodrich Rogers?
Present.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Present.
Mr. Levlin Rome?
Present.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Present.
Dr. Yvette Richardson?
Present.
Governor Kay Ivey.
Thank you, ma'am. Previously, the agenda for today's meeting has been circulated to the Board of Trustees, and you've had an opportunity to review that. I would now entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Have a motion for Mr. Rogers.
Second.
Second for Mr. Davis. All those in favor of approving the agenda signify by raising your hand or voice vote.
Aye.
Motion carries. Likewise, the minutes from the April 19th meeting at Northeast Alabama Community College have previously been circulated to the trustees for consideration and opportunity to review those. I would now entertain a motion to approve the minutes from April's meeting.
Motion.
Motion for Mr. Davis?
Second.
Second. Ms. Gray? All those in favor signify by raising your hand or voice vote.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is item number seven, number six, new business. We're actually going to move that, it has been moved in the agenda to the last part of the meeting. Madam Secretary, has anyone signed up for a public comment? No one signed up. Chuck's lost his chance.
Chuck's lost. I'm disappointed.
He won't get to hackle Mr. Davis and I going forward. All right, item number eight, college spotlight, Calhoun Community College. Mr. President?
Calhoun Community College is proud to celebrate more than 75 years.
I just want to say to you, Mr. Chairman, Chancellor Baker, and trustees, I'm humbled that you have chosen me to lead Calhoun. Who would have ever thought that God would use a little old country boy from Jackson County to lead a community college, but he did. And I appreciate that, and I do not take this charge lightly, and I promise you, I'm working very hard to do the best I can. Now the video, please.
Calhoun Community College is proud to celebrate more than 75 years. Our mission is promoting student success and community development through quality education, cultural enrichments, and workforce training with core values of accountability, collaboration, diversity, equity, innovation, and integrity. Our vision is success for every student, the community, and the college. From our humble beginnings in the 1940s to the largest two-year college in Alabama. Our main campus is located just north of the Tennessee River in Decatur. The prestigious Alabama Center for the Arts is located in downtown Decatur, and our Huntsville campus is across from the U.S. Space and Rocket Center and Cummings Research Park. Calhoun is recognized as the region's workforce development leader, preparing students through real-world experiences and hands-on training, learning through classroom and laboratory instruction with classes in person and online. According to a recent study, one out of every 40 jobs in our region is supported by the activities at Calhoun, boasting an impressive economic impact of $733.2 million to Alabama's economy, supporting 9,754 jobs. A student graduating with an associate degree from Calhoun will earn $11,300 more per year compared to someone with just a high school diploma. Our students are prepared to transfer to a four-year university or go straight to work, with some of our majors having 100% job placement after graduation.
It's a very good quality education that you get. There's a lot of experience that the teachers have that they pass on to us that I find very interesting.
When I dual enrolled, it helped me to meet new people and to be prepared for a full-time schedule at Calhoun. I would recommend Calhoun's pre-engineering program to other students because it lays a great and firm foundation for the last two years of engineering school.
The nursing program here prepares you, like it tells you everything you need to know, and not just teaching you the basic, the fundamentals, it also teaches you like the skills that you need, you know, to become a nurse. Everyone spoke highly of Calhoun, and it made me feel good to be a part of it, you know, to know that this is a school that everyone wants to associate with.
It's been a really great experience. I've been studying at the Alabama Center for the Arts, learning about how to act through song, how to act through dancing, and I've been in several productions such as Cabaret, Legally Blonde. When you're looking for something that is going to help you grow in your talent, I would say this is the program for you. It is the most personal, the most engaging program you could ever be a part of, and I wouldn't trade my time here for anything.
I have had a great experience here at Calhoun because of my friends and faculty. People here helped me get out of my comfort zone and do things that I've never thought I would do before. My experiences here at Calhoun have been phenomenal. My service as president of the Phi Theta Kappa Sigma Lam D'Chapitre here at Calhoun is what has made my experience great.
Calhoun's been a great experience for me because it kind of helped me get my foot in the door of industries, from the many different career events that Calhoun hosted to the personal work experience that I've been able to gain as well as getting my degree. There are many things that I'm able to work on now that are going on to machines that I was working on as an operator, and I'm being brought in because of my experience through the Edric program in Calhoun.
Calhoun brings together quality and affordability to meet the educational and training demands for our high-tech area. For more than 75 years, no matter the season, Calhoun Community College is here to help our community grow. So many student success stories start right here at Calhoun Community College. The mission is just as clear today as it was in our beginning in the 1940s, and we're working hard to make the future even brighter. It's no wonder we're your community, your college, your future.
Very good. Nice video, sir. Thank you so much. We appreciate what you do at Calhoun. I personally have a great affinity for it, as I think I employ four Calhoun graduates, so thank you, sir.
I think a round of applause is appropriate.
All right, we'll move along now to section nine, executive legal and public information. We'll begin with item 9A1, Gadsden State Community College, approval for naming of the Cherokee Arena. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize the president of Gadsden State Community College to name the Cherokee Arena on the Cherokee campus as in honor of former state representative Richard J. Lindsay. Yes, ma'am. Sorry. Louis lost my place there for a moment.
Thank you, Chair McAnally, and to our Board of Trustees, to Chancellor Baker. It certainly is a privilege for me today to be able to share information about our former state representative, Richard Lindsay. Richard Lindsay served in the Alabama House District 39 from 1983 to 2018. He was first elected to the House in 1983 and served nine consecutive terms. He served 10 years as the chairman of the Educational Finance and Appropriations Committee. He served for three terms as chairman of the House Agriculture Committee. Also served on several regional and national legislative committees. Representative Lindsay helped steer a satellite campus of Gadsden State Community College to center. The $22 million facility that opened in 2008 is a great asset to Cherokee County and to our region of the state, and it is one of his greatest accomplishments. He's had many. Richard Lindsay is one of the owners of the Cherokee Gin and Cotton Company. It is one of the largest gins in the South, and they farm 3,400 acres in three counties. His family has been in business for 68 years. The Cherokee Gin and Cotton Company serves the cotton producers of Northeast Alabama and Northwest Georgia. Richard has served as president of Southeastern Cotton Genders Association. He is a longtime member of the Cherokee County Chamber of Commerce. He has served on the boards of the Cherokee County Assisted Living Federation of America, the Southeastern Cotton Genders Association, the CUSA Alabama River Improvement Association, First Southern State Bank, Cherokee County Alpha Organization, Howell Cemetery Association, and Fornie Masonic Lodge. Representative Lindsay received numerous awards during his legislative service, including legislator of the year from the Alabama Rural Electric Cooperative, state representative of the year from the Alabama Association of Conservation Districts, and received the lifetime legislative leadership award for his work on behalf of Alabama's schoolchildren from the Council of Leaders in Alabama Schools. His wife is joining him today. He and his wife, Jana, have two children. Rich, who's married to Cassandra, Anna, who's married to Caleb, and they have two beautiful grandchildren, although I've not seen them, I'm certain of that, Savannah and RJ. It is my privilege to introduce to you our former state representative and the person I hope you will honor today by naming the Richard Lindsay Arena, Senator Richard Lindsay.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the honor, Dr. Murphy. Chancellor, Chancellor Baker and I go back a long ways. If you noticed in the bio, elected in 1983. To some of these folks out here, that's ancient history. But for Chancellor Baker and I, it's just a few years ago. It is an honor today, and I appreciate the Board of Trustees and you taking the time and honoring me with this naming of this arena. As with any honor, there's always more people that make the honoree successful. And first of all, I want to recognize my wife, Jana. She's been with me the entire time. We married just after I was elected in 1983, so she has stood by me the entire time. We raised two children while I was running back and forth to Montgomery. So that required a lot of patience and stability, and I appreciate that. People that helped bring the Cherokee County Campus of Gadsden State to our area. Governor Bob Riley, very instrumental at the time, Chancellor Johnson, Renee Culverhouse. All those people were instrumental in making this happen. And to tell you what an impact it has had on our area is phenomenal. So many people in rural Cherokee County have gotten a two-year degree and are now working in jobs that they probably would have never, ever had nothing more than a minimal job. So it's been, it's bringing great success, and I know with the leadership of Dr. Murphy, it will continue to have great success in the future. So again, thank you for this honor, and thank you for your time today.
Dr. Murphy, thank you for bringing this to attention, and we have it now before you board this item, and I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Rogers.
Second.
Second for Mr. Davis. Any discussion, comment? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor signify by raising your hand or voice vote.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, sir.
Senator McAnally, may I introduce Senator Andrew Jones and his wife, Summer, who are also joining us. Thank you so much for your support in the Cherokee community.
Thank you. Moving now to item 9A2, Central Alabama Community College Bookstore Operation Agreement, Barnes &amp; Noble College Booksellers. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize the president of Central Alabama Community College to enter into a bookstore operation and services agreement with Barnes &amp; Noble College Booksellers, LLC, with a period beginning June 12, 2023, and ending on June 30, 2028, with an option for an additional five years and to charge a $24 per credit hour fee for textbook rental to take effect fall semester 2023. The fiscal consideration is that Barnes &amp; Noble College will also offer a capital investment up to $50,000 to be used to design, construct, equip, and install fixtures in the bookstore. Barnes &amp; Noble College will provide $3,000 for annual textbook scholarships and donations to be awarded at the discretion of Central Alabama Community College. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion of Ms. Gray, second for Mr. Davis. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor signify by raising your hand or voice vote.
Aye.
Motion carries. I should have said before, but I will say, our guests, we are very thrilled to have you with us, and feel free to stay, sir, if you would like or leave as you need to. But thank you for being here. All right, now moving to section 10, Instruction, Research, and Development, Adult Education, Facilities, Fiscal Information Technology, and Workforce Development. Beginning with item 10A1, Ingram State Technical Community College Certificate and Industrial Maintenance. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees approve Ingram State Technical College application for a certificate and industrial State Technical College application for a certificate in industrial maintenance to be implemented fall semester 2023. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion of Ms. Gray.
Second.
Second for Mr. Rome. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor signify by raising your hand or voice vote.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving now to item 10 A2, Coastal Alabama Community College Addition of Instructional Site. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees approve an additional instructional site for Coastal Alabama Community College. The fiscal consideration is the operation of this site proposed herein is within the budget of the college. I would entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion for Mr. Davis.
Second.
Second for Mr. Mitchell. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor signify by raising your hand or voice vote.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving now to item 10 A3, Gadsden State Community College Approval of Increase in Dorm Rental Fee. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize Gadsden State Community College to increase the rental fee for the college's dorms. The fee increase will take effect fall semester 2023. The fiscal consideration is $55,000 additional dollars of revenue annually to the college. Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Rogers.
Second.
Second for Mr. Rome. Any comments? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor signify by raising your hand or voice vote.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now moving to item 10 A4, Enterprise State Community College Authorizing Resolution for Bond Series 2023. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees approve the attached authorizing resolution which sets forth details regarding limited obligation Enterprise State Community College revenue bonds for the benefit of the Alabama Community College System. These bonds will be used to fund various capital improvements. The fiscal consideration is approximately 23,000, 23,500,000 in revenue bonds for no more than 30 years with annual debt service expense of approximately $1.6 million. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Mitchell.
Second.
Second for Mr. Davis. Any comments? I would just say that we had the opportunity to review these last month, fairly detailed documents that were provided to us by Sarah Calhoun. We appreciate that. Hearing no further questions, we'll call the vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand or voice vote.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving now to item 10 A5, J.F. Drake State Community and Technical College Adoption of Resolution Approving Bond Issue. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees adopt a resolution providing, one, for the construction, renovating, and equipping of facilities on the J.F. Drake State Community and Technical College campus; two, for the financing thereof by the issuance of revenue bonds in the maximum par amount of up to $6.5 million; and three, for securing the payment of the principal of, and the, and interest on such bonds; and four, for payment of cost of issuing the bonds. The fiscal consideration is approximately $6.5 million for a maximum of a 30-year bond with annual debt service of approximately $350,000. I would now entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Rogers.
Second.
Second for Mr. Davis. Any comments? Likewise, we've had these documents provided to us previously for review, and we again appreciate the system office and council for providing those for us. Hearing no further questions, we'll call the vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand or voice vote.
Aye.
Motion carries. And now item 10 A6, Sneed State Community College Campus Security Upgrade. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize Sneed State Community College to expend $850,000 for the purpose of upgrading its security system in order to maintain the safety of the college's educational environment. The fiscal consideration is $850,000 from HERF funds. I would now entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Rogers.
Second.
Second for Mr. Rome. Any comments? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor signify by raising your hand or voice vote.
Aye.
And the motion carries. Moving now to item 10 A7, Enterprise State Community College Capital Projects Approval for Bond Financing. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees approve the following capital projects for bond financing consideration at Enterprise State Community College: the Workforce Skills Training Center, the Performing Arts Center, the Lolly Gymnasium, and Wallace Hall. The approved capital projects will allow the chancellor and the president of the college to pursue bond financing up to $20 million to fund capital improvements for the campus facilities. The fiscal consideration is up to $20 million. Any comments? Entertain a motion. Motion for Mr. Mitchell.
Second.
Second for Mr. Davis. All those in favor signify by raising your hand or voice vote.
Aye.
Likewise, in item 10 A8, Drake State Community Technical College Capital Projects Approval for Bond Financing. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees approve the following capital projects for bond financing consideration at Drake State Community and Technical College: Buildings 500, 300, 400, 700, and the library. The approved capital projects will allow the chancellor and the president of the college to pursue bond financing up to $6 million to fund capital improvements for the campus facilities. Would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Rogers.
Second.
Second for Mr. Davis. Any comments? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor signify by raising your hand or voice vote.
Aye.
The motion carries. Moving now to item 10 A9, Enterprise State Community College Renovation of Stegall Hall. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize Enterprise State Community College to proceed with construction of the project named renovation of Stegall Hall. The project scope will renovate the restrooms, public corridors, administration and lobby space, and a portion of the building HVAC system. Construction contracts shall be executed no later than August 1, 2023, or this authorization shall expire. The expected milestones for the project are a bid date of May 4, substantial completion fourth quarter 2023, final completion also fourth quarter 2023. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Mitchell.
Second.
Second for Ms. Gray. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand or voice vote. Motion carries. The final item under this section, item 10 A10, George Corley Wallace State Community College Selma Drainage Improvements at Selma Campus. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize George Corley Wallace State Community College Selma to proceed with the project called Drainage Improvements. The scope of work is correcting existing drainage system that is not carrying stormwater runoff correctly due to the inadequate and disintegrated existing infrastructure that is causing flooding on campus. Therefore, improvement of campus drainage system is needed to stop flooding and correct campus hydrology on Selma campus. Construction contracts shall be executed no later than August 1, 2023, or this authorization shall expire. Bid date was April 13, 2023. Substantial completion is third quarter 2023 with final completion third quarter 2023. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Rome.
Second.
Second for Mr. Davis. Any comments? Truly a project near and dear to my heart, fixing drainage problems. Hearing no further comment, we'll call the question. All those in favor signify by raising your hand or voice vote.
Aye.
And the motion carries. Very good. Those are the items that are before us in section 10. Moving now to section 11, Personnel. Chancellor? No items for Personnel. We'll move to 12. The Chancellor's report.
I'm going to call on Neil. Neil? Okay. Give our regular attendance report, enrollment report.
That's right. And, and because I get to speak to you so often, I try to keep it short every time. And today's no exception. Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to be able to, to provide an enrollment update. And today, we're going to focus a little bit on our summer enrollment and then our, our fall projection. Our colleges are busy finishing up their spring semester, they're hosting their commencement exercises, they're registering students for the summer term, and currently, we have 41,253 students registered for summer 23 courses. That is just shy of where we finished our summer 22 term. However, our credit hour production for summer 23, and again, this summer term has not even started yet. We still have about two weeks before the summer term begins. But of the students who are, who are registered, that 41,000 number that I quoted a moment ago, our summer 23 credit hour production has already eclipsed that of what, what those students were taking in summer 22. So it looks like our average credit hours per student is going to be up, which is great. So again, there are approximately two weeks left until summer courses begin, so we're really optimistic about what we're going to see this summer. And then, of course, moving on to the fall term, our colleges are working diligently to ensure that fall enrollment is where it needs to be. We're still ahead in our year-to-date application comparison. Our colleges have received over 52,000 applications for fall 23. That's, it's a little over 16% ahead of where we were on this date last year, and we have four, almost 4,400 more first-time freshman applications than we had this time last year. 21 of our 24 colleges are ahead in application count, and again, fall registration has not fully opened yet, but based on the application figures and, and the good work that our colleges are doing, leveraging the Wiley tools and TargetX communication platforms, we're very optimistic about what the fall is going to, is going to hold. So I'll entertain any questions that you might have, but if that's, if that's it, I'll take my seat.
Any questions from board? Thank Neil.
Thank you for your time.
I think Neil, that this, these numbers are amazing when you look at what's happening nationally. Nationally, enrollment in community colleges and regional four-year colleges has declined.
That's right.
Actually, the numbers of students walking across the stage and getting a high school diploma has declined. And I think this speaks volumes about the work of our people and student services across the state. And I, I just want them to know how much we appreciate them.
I would completely agree, and I think it says a lot about our state's confidence in, in what the community college system is doing too, because those students, too, they have a lot of options, and they're, they're entrusting their education to us at a time when, when community colleges across the country are not experiencing the same level of trust. So kudos to our board, kudos to our presidents.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thanks. That's great. David Walters, I'm not sure exactly which report you're going to give first, but you've got two or three that you need to mention.
Yes, sir. Well, certainly, Neil, I think that may have been the quickest you've done in a long time, Neil. So what I'll do is take advantage of that time. So I'm pleased and honored to be in front of you today and share with you a couple of things real quickly, initiatives that we're doing that we're very, very proud of, and it's all about building the relationships in our community. And certainly, we're, we're doing that constantly. And Chancellor Baker, thank you for your direction and your vision, and Chair McAnally, thank you and the board members for allowing me to share with you a couple of things this morning. The first is going to be our partnership with Coca-Cola United. And Andy, would you join me this morning, please? Come on up. Many of you may have seen this already, but they actually donated a couple of trucks to the Alabama Community College System, to a couple of our colleges, Trenton State and Southern Union. And one of the trucks was actually, we did a ribbon cutting ceremony yesterday and, and donated the truck, and I'm going to show a video right now, or at least I hope I am. If you will, show the video.
Truck drivers make up 125,000 jobs in the state of Alabama, but it's not enough to meet the growing needs for shipping. To help alleviate that burden caused by the supply chain crisis, Coca-Cola Bottling Company United made two big donations that will help the Alabama Community College System get more truck drivers on the road. Julia Avant has the details.
The Alabama Trucking Association says finding professional truck drivers has been a problem for decades. The problem only getting worse during the pandemic due to multiple factors. To help continue to get the nation's $800 billion industry back on track, Coca-Cola United handed over not one, but two sets of keys for new trucks to be used during driving courses provided by the Alabama Community College System.
A tangible investment, not only for us, but for the Alabama Community College System as well.
ACCS offers more than 20 truck driving courses across the state. The college system says in the last five years, more than 10,000 Alabama residents were able to get certified to get behind the wheel, with the average annual salary for a professional truck driver in Alabama being $70,000. Senior Vice Chancellor at ACCS, Susan Price, is thankful for the partnership with Coca-Cola United for not only making their driving courses more hands-on with this donation, but that this will also help the communities in which drivers deliver to.
We are committed to continuing our work with you to help open opportunities for Alabamians to serve and to work in great careers.
We spoke to one man who benefited from one of the truck driving courses offered through ACCS. He told us, Val, that he was able to get certified while working full-time. This opportunity, he says, he is grateful for, and that he will be able to better provide for his family through professional truck driving.
Well, and you saw our local movie star, Susan Price, Senior Vice Chancellor Price, and she still has the keys. Oh, did you? Okay. All right. Andy, would you join me and say a few words just about this relationship and partnership? And for many of you guys, we've actually had a relationship for what, over three or four years? We started with the Clean Home Alabama Campaign and the Spring Cleanup Events, and we do that every year through our community colleges. So, the floor is yours.
All right. Thank you very much. President Hodges, I have a special affinity for Calhoun also. I'm deviating off the script a little bit, I apologize for that. But growing up in Athens and Decatur and the Tanner area, I actually had an uncle who was a crop duster. We worked all of those fields right around Calhoun, and we used to call Calhoun UCLA. It was University of Calhoun alongside the airport. And then, and then when I grew up and started going to school, I actually got to go to Calhoun and take classes during the summer, and we referred to that as Tulane, because there's two lanes down here and two lanes back. But it really set my, my career and trajectory off to a wonderful start, so I just wanted to say thank you. Yesterday, that's right. I also knew Gary Reedus, played ball with him. So I wanted to say thank you. If you weren't with us yesterday, what you saw was just a glimpse. I mean, we've had media reports all the way from Anchorage, Alaska, with that event. And so it's, it has really become more than just donating two trucks. We look at it in such a way that all the work is honorable, and what we did yesterday was an investment, not only in the community college system and, and then the future of Coca-Cola United, but also in individuals from all across the state of Alabama that want to take those courses. And I always remember that Coach Danny Ford from Clemson was talking to a bunch of players one day, and he said, you just got to remember, it's not about the years that you were in college, whether it's two years or four years, it's about the 40 or 50 years after you graduate. And what you do today will determine what you will do over those next 40 or 50 years. And what you do today will determine what you will do over those next 40 or 50 years. And regardless of what you do, there's only two kinds of jobs in this world. One, you get up, you take a shower, and you go to work. The other one, you get up, you go to work, you come home and take a shower. And that's the only kind of jobs there are in this world. And all work is honorable. And so what we want to teach people and teach individuals, and we're already reaping the benefits very selfishly at Coca-Cola, where we have our associates working full-time, going to school, getting that CDL, and moving from being a picker or a forklift driver to now being a commercial driver's license individual. The average age is 52 years old. So we have to fill the pipeline. And so we felt like this opportunity today and yesterday, and what we get to celebrate today, is just an example of that, and we appreciate your partnership. Thank you very much.
In a little token of the appreciation of the partnership, you have a Coca-Cola bottle in front of you. So it's got a sweater on it. We don't want it to get hot or cold, I guess. So there you go. Andy, stay with me, but now we'll switch gears and talk about the Diamond Jubilee. And Andy, you'll be a big part of the Diamond Jubilee as well. So I want to bring Ebony up. Ebony, are you here? Yeah. All right. So we had a kickoff, April 17th, wonderful event. You've got some things in front of you. We've got little bottles of water. You've got a challenge coin. One side is ACCS, the other side is the 60th anniversary. It also has the Pass for Success Foundation at the bottom, the website on it. You also have a lapel pin. So wear it well and certainly celebrate the 60th. We've got a lot of activities going across the state right now. Over 800 events have been submitted by our colleges, showcase events on the college campuses. So I'm going to have Ebony kind of give an update of the committee work and what's going on out there.
Awesome. Thank you, David. Well, as he said, we have been having some fun. That kickoff on April 17th was amazing. Thank you to everybody who helped with that. It was an awesome showing of support, as well as an awesome just kickoff to everything that's to come. We've had excellent press coverage on that event. We also had some excellent press coverage where we followed up the kickoff with a big announcement on some of our first community service projects as part of the Jubilee, and those were in partnership with Coca-Cola. So thank you again. With the media coverage that we've had and what we know about the audiences of the newspapers and the magazines and TV media that we market with, we can comfortably estimate that at least 100,000 people who are actually interested in community college, so not just their audience numbers, but people who they believe are actually interested in community college, have found out about our message, and they've found out about our Jubilee. And that's only from system-level marketing. So what our colleges are doing, where they announce the Jubilee, that's an additional number of folks who are finding out. Now, Alabama has more than 5 million residents, so we have about 4.8 million people to tell this to. But we are committed over the next two years to making sure that everybody knows about the community college system, where we were, and what we'll do moving forward. Let's see. We're thankful, obviously, to the communications team here, as well as direct communications, our college presidents, and our PIOs who have been helping disseminate the message. But we're also so thankful to the committees who are taking time to make sure that this Jubilee is truly memorable. Dr. Goodwin mentioned great efforts even yesterday on connecting them being the first public junior college to the reason that we need to celebrate this system-wide. So we thank you for that and the efforts that you're doing on campus. Our presidents who are part of our committees, Dr. Anthony, President Scroos, Ms. Frenderberg, President Kelly, they're making sure on these committees that not only are we celebrating, but we're also keeping students at the core of everything that we do. So even the best and brightest ideas that I think we're coming up with, they make sure that it stays at a level that's understandable, that's practical, and it's truly going to mean something to more than just us, because old folks party a little differently than these students sometimes. So they're making sure that we stay in tune. We have some dates that we'll be announcing soon for the golf scramble, for the gala, as well as pep rallies, press conferences, and so many more fun things for this year. So if y'all have anything that you can think of that can make this even cooler than what it already is, please don't hesitate to let us know. But we want to assure you that the message is getting out about Alabama's community colleges. Do y'all have any questions that we can entertain? When y'all do that, it makes me feel like I was too big.
We can't top what you've done already.
Well, hey, thank y'all so much, and I appreciate the opportunity to share.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, I'll wrap up, but I do want to thank everyone in the room, especially our presidents and their staff, for the hard work that's occurring out there right now. And we still got a lot of work ahead of us. So write this date down, and I'll send it out to everyone. But April 3, 2024, is when we're going to do our golf scramble. And it's going to begin at 8:00 a.m., and we're doing nine courses across the state of Alabama, Robert Trent Jones Golf Courses. It's owned by the RSA. So we're going to be celebrating on that day. We're finalizing the paperwork right now. Still got a lot of work ahead of us to make this happen. This is a large undertaking, but we're really excited about it. So Chancellor, with that, I'll wrap up unless there's any other questions.
Thank you, David, so much. Appreciate all you're doing. A lot going on and very important stuff, and thank you for your efforts very much.
Thank you.
I'll say thank you to Coca-Cola. Back when I was a kid, we called these Short Cokes.
Yes, sir.
I was going to say, I'll have to hide this from my mom, that's for sure.
Call them the chief?
Oh, yes. Chief Bailey, and we're going to talk to the presidents this afternoon as well, but we did want to give an update to the board. And Chancellor, thank you for reminding me. Chief Bailey, would you give us an update on what's going on out there? I know in your world, it's very exciting. Certainly, safety and security is very exciting to our campuses. It means a lot. So share some of the things that you're working on.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning, Chief.
We have been quite busy over the last year and a half, to say the least. One of the things that we did, with me coming on to the system office, is we started doing tabletop scenarios. And that gave us a chance to do a good evaluation of what we had on each of our college campuses. Now, unfortunately, every time we see the news, you see another active shooter case, another act of violence. It's touched everybody in this room to some degree, even what we had in Davil. So our response to that is, we need to beef up what we've done. Now, in the last several months, we are at the point now to where we have 22 fully functional police departments. This is a lot different from the days of having security departments. When I say fully functional, we're taking the time, the chancellor is helping us with this, we're providing grants to the colleges to help them get the appropriate equipment, we're helping with training, professional development, and we're moving in just light year speed right now, trying to get caught up so we can face those challenges. We're looking at, and part of that is our selection process on as we're hiring. The chancellor has allowed us to implement new policies that go beyond what the state requirements are for hiring police officers, where we're doing more in-depth background checks, including polygraphs, psych evaluations. We're getting way deeper than what we ever had before, and we're getting the better quality applicant because of that. And it's important who we select for these positions. The training and professional development that goes into this is huge, because as we're standing up the departments, it's not just you're a police department. We're making sure that we have policies in place, we're working on the orientation for the new chiefs as they come in, we're working on orientations for the new officers, the continuing education, and we're pushing that little of competency. But while we're doing that, we're also working with our partners in the agencies that surround our colleges, because we have to work together to actually address these issues. A great example is what we're going to be doing in June at Jeff State. We're going to be doing a fully functional active shooter exercise. But instead of it being an exercise that's an hour long, we're turning this into an eight-hour training day. We have partnerships with Alea. The SBI is actually sending their SWAT to work with us as we work with the individual officers on the active shooter response. UAB, with their emergency department, is going to be sending doctors to actually help our officers when we're working on the medical response of mass casualty events. We're partnered with a fire college. We're going to be dealing with breaching. Y'all saw UVAU several years, a year ago, where they had trouble get, we're making sure our folks are equipped and trained to handle those, even into stuff like bus assaults. Hopefully, that'll never happen. But you know what? We saw that in Midland just a couple of years ago. So it's one of those things that we're looking at our potential problems and coming up with a strategy to address it. And we're making leaps and bounds with this. The chancellor has opened the door for us. We're hiring the right people. We're equipping them and training them. So we're making our college campuses safer absolutely every day.
Thank you. Any questions, sir? Chief, I just want to say, that's fantastic news. Appreciate the hard work. That's honestly, that's far more significant than I realized, and I am pleased to see it. Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you, sir.
Good job. Chancellor, is that it?
That's enough.
That's enough. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. That completes the chancellor's report. We're going to move to item 13, committee reports. Anything from our committees?
Personnel committee.
Personnel committee, Mr. Davis.
Thank you. The Personnel Committee, consisting of myself, Valerie Gray, and Levlin Rome, initiated Chancellor Baker's performance review on December 1, 2022, in accordance to Section 6 of the Chancellor's Employment Agreement, which requires an annual review to be completed by December 31 of each calendar year. As reported during our January 11 meeting, the chancellor's performance rating was exceptional with a composite score of 4.9 on a scale from 1 to 5, with 5 being a perfect score. One-tenth of a point from being perfect. Based on his exceptional performance, the Personnel Committee recommends extending the chancellor's contract by nine months to December 31, 2025, which would give him 10 years in the system. And we also recommend a 15% salary increase effective June 1, 2023. The chancellor's contract of employment would be amended to reflect the above recommendations. At this time, I would like to make a motion for the board to approve an extension of the chancellor's contract to December 31, 2025, and a 15% salary increase in accordance with the Second Amendment to the chancellor's contract of employment.
Board, you have before you a motion as described by Mr. Davis, and I would entertain a second.
Second.
Second for Mr. Rogers. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by raising your hand or voice vote. Motion carries unanimously, sir. I would like to take the opportunity at this time to recognize Wallace Hansfield and Dr. Colowicks and these beautiful ferns that we have before us. Last month, we were a little out of pocket being over at Rainsville and a little bit past Easter. I'm sure all the Easter lilies were sold, were they not? Yeah, I'm sure they were. They're always beautiful. But I mentioned to my wife, Mandy had told me we were going to have these ferns today, and she was quite happy to hear that. So Dr. Colowicks, thank you for this and for all that your folks do there in the horticultural program to brighten up our meeting on occasion. Thank you. All right. The date and location of our next meeting will be the work session following this meeting. It is currently 11 o'clock, and we're going to finish up here, and then we'll take a brief recess.
Can I have a point of personal?
Certainly. Point of personal privilege for the chancellor.
Several years ago, the community college system was fortunate enough to have legislation passed to create a board specifically for the purpose of directing the community college system. And I think all of you, presidents and all, staff, understands what a plus that has been. One of the reasons it was such a plus was because of the people who made up that new board. And it's been a delightful experience from day one. And we've had ups and downs, issues and pleasant and not-so-pleasant sometimes. But it's been a board who has been totally committed to the improvement and to provide the leadership for the community college system. In that process, there were limitations placed on how long a person could serve. And we've had some members who's timed out previously. We have two members still on the board, as of now, who have served eight years, the limit of two full turns. And, Mr. Chairman, today wasn't the first time you've ever led in prayer at the board meeting. I just happened to be sitting in the audience at Calhoun Community College when the board was meeting there, at which time you asked me, the board did, to serve as interim chancellor. But you led prayer that day. I've never forgotten that. That day, it impressed upon me the dedication of the board and their seriousness about improving the state of Alabama by offering the kinds of things that the community college offers. And it's been a delightful pleasure to know these two people and to know all of the board members that have served. But the last two, I believe this is your last one.
This will do it for myself and for Mr. Davis.
And I want to give you a hand and all the audience.
Thank you. Quite humbly, we do have a couple of pieces in regards to that transition. But maybe before we do, Mr. Davis, any comments?
Well, I'm overwhelmed with emotion. Thank you.
That's why I'm asking you to go first.
This has been a true honor to serve. I was asked eight years ago to serve, and when I look back and see the, you know, the success of the system and just the students. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to speak to the graduating class of Southern Union, and the parents were excited, the students were excited, and it's just a testament of great work of the system, the chancellor, the presidents, the staff. So I just feel very honored to have served, and I'm going to miss you, you know, but I'm going to be just a phone call away if you need me. But again, thank you for allowing me to serve. And I remember starting eight years ago, I had Dr. Colowicks and many of the president's staff would send me notes and help and help us go through policy procedures, and we couldn't have done it without you. You know, we're from industry, and we had to learn this world. And hopefully, we made a difference. That was my, part of my talk yesterday. Have purpose in this life and go make a difference. So I hope I've made a difference, and I appreciate you and thank you for allowing me to serve. Thank you.
I would just reiterate everything Milton said. It, you know, it was an unusual request that I initially had from Senator Orr about my interest in serving. And my wife and I were somewhere in middle Tennessee, driving to attend a wedding out in a barn somewhere, out in the country one day, and I got a phone call from the governor and who asked me to serve and quizzed me a little bit about who I was and what my thoughts were, and I agreed to serve. And then here we are. Wow, it's been a quick eight years, hasn't it, Milton? Yes. You know, I would just, I jotted down a few things that come to mind that we have been able to govern over and with probably more credit given than due, quite frankly, to us. But the assimilation of the system office into a true system and the function of it as a true system, the professionalization of all aspects of the system, the finance, IT, professional development that takes place across the system now, the fact that we have a common ERP system, which at one time was thought impossible. a common ERP system, which at one time was thought impossible. I'm thankful for so many of you who were engaged in that multi-year process. We're thankful for the legislature for bringing considerable funds to make that happen. As Chair of the Audit Finance Committee, you know, when I got here, I was getting reports that were six weeks in a rear and now it's instantaneous. Thankful for that, thankful for all of you who were a part of that. The standardization of our accounting and finance offices across the system, getting everybody on the same charts of accounts, just some things that were simple for us to ask for. But I recognize that it was hair pulling, teeth pulling, painful for some of you to implement. But we are so thankful that you did and that we are where we are today. Shared services, an idea that we've been, we talked about for many years and we're doing. We're doing it with several schools now. 24 permanent presidents for the first time in over 20 years. Major accomplishment. I agree with the chancellor and his statements that he makes many times. What a tremendous group of 24 presidents we have. So proud of every one of you and what you're doing and the way that you're leading your colleges and the way that you're moving the state forward from a frankly, very important role in what happens in this state. And we're thankful for you. I feel like that the system, chancellor, has returned to its highest levels of respect across the state. And your leadership has been key in that. And I think that's represented in the review that the board has given you. And we're thankful for your dedication and your continued dedication and always striving for excellence. You know, it's, it is a pleasure to serve on a board, and I know many, everybody up here has served on a dozen or more. But it's a pleasure to serve on a board that has such a professional staff and such competent leadership that challenge and push people every day to be the best you can be. It works and here we are. Thank you, sir, for that. It's been a pleasure. And I like Milton will be a phone call away. Our next meeting will be the work session. And considering it is now 8:11, we're going to, we've got one more item, one more item to cover, but we're going to come back, tell you what, we're going to come back at 11:25. So I want to say that before we move forward. That will be here in this meeting. And then the Board of Trustees meeting coming next, June 14th, 2023, 10 a.m. in this room here at the ACCS Building in Montgomery. The last item that I have before me is the election of board officers. We have two positions that we elect annually, the chairman and the vice chairman. And I would now, for the chairmanship of the board, entertain a nomination.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Levlin Roan as chairman.
Mr. Davis has nominated Mr. Levlin Roan chairman. We have a second from Jeb Shale. All those in favor of electing Mr. Levlin Roan as chairman of the Board of Trustees of the Alabama Community College System signify by raising your hand or voice vote. Unanimous, Mr. Roan. Thank you, sir. And the second item that we have is for the vice chairman. I would now entertain a nomination for the vice chairman's role.
Mr. McAnally, I'd like to nominate Mr. Rogers as vice chairman.
Mr. Mitchell has nominated Mr. Goodrich Rogers as vice chairman. All those in favor of Mr. Rogers as the vice chairman of the Board of Trustees of the Alabama Community College System?
Second.
We need a second for that?
Second.
Yes? We have a second for Ms. Gray. Thank you. All those in favor signify by raising your hand or voice vote. Unanimous of those who raised it. It has truly been a pleasure and now I will pass this gavel to Mr. Roan.
Before we adjourn, just a couple of very quick thoughts. When you look at that logo that's on the screen, the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees, there's one word for me that really comes out of that logo, and it is the word "community." It's the same font as everything else there, but it actually carries more weight from my perspective. If you look at how and what that word actually means and where it comes from, it's basically, not to get too deep into Latin, but "con," which actually is Latin prefix, which means together, and "munis," which has to do with performing service. If you kind of put those two together in a mashup, you're talking about together performing service. We've heard a lot of examples of that service today, as an example, through the partnership with Coca-Cola and the honorability of work, through what's going on at Calhoun and those young people who talk about their abilities to live their best dreams and make them come real. It's for that mother or father who is ready to go back to school after some time away to try to change their economic trajectory. Those are the folks that that word includes. For me personally, it's where I come from in terms of a grand, a great grandfather who was a high school principal in the early 1900s, or my mother who is here and a retired school teacher of second graders, and a father who is deceased, but he was an eighth grade history teacher. All of those things are the word "community" for me. Each one of us has our own story to tell. And through the community college system and this board of directors, we have some fairly detailed things that we have to do. We have to make sure that the narrative and the numbers make sense. We have to make sure that the attendance that Neil talks about is going in the right direction, that there are resources. All these things come together to make the community successful. But also, sometimes there's also a need to have a little bit of failure along the way before everybody clutches their pearls and... Bear with me. It's good to have a little bit of failure because it makes you better to see it from somebody else's perspective. What do I mean by that? If you've never lost anything, you may not know how to be the best team member there is because you always win. But if you lose, sometimes you have a greater appreciation and maybe a little bit humbler when you do win. If you've experienced want, just a little bit or to some degree, you have the ability to sit in the next person's shoes and understand when you may not have all the resources needed to do something. If you had a little bit of heartbreak, you have a greater sense of compassion. So I'm not asking folks to go out and fail by no means, but I'm saying in failure, there is success. And through the Alabama Community College System and the charter that we are both, all of us involved with, in one way or another, we have great and humble respect for each and every one of you and what you do every day to make that word "community" stand out. Our job is relatively simple in the thing, scheme of things, is to make sure that all those things are there, that you can be the best community that we have and to be the community that is together performing service. So that's what we hope to continue building upon, the legacy of those who have come before us, and we appreciate them and thank you and most humble to be in this position. Thank you very much. And with this, this meeting is adjourned and we'll see you back at 11:25.
...as well are these conversations and reconnections and connections in many cases. So with that, this is the work session. The agenda is before us, and we will start with David O'Brien.
Good morning to you all.
Morning, morning.
Morning.
The first item on the work session agenda is Reed State's request that the Board of Trustees review and approve the college's current mission statement. Are there any questions relating to this item? The next item on the work session agenda is Wallace Dauphin's request that the Board of Trustees review and approve its revised mission statement. Are there any questions relating to this item? The next item is Ingram State's request that the Board of Trustees review and approve its current mission statement. Are there any questions relating to this item? The next item is Enterprise State's request that the Board of Trustees authorize the college to increase its special building fee from $10 to $12 per credit hour. The fee, if approved, will go into effect fall semester 2023. The estimated additional revenue that will be generated is just over $90,000. The additional revenue will be used for payment of principal and interest on the future planned bond issue which is needed for campus facilities' construction and renovation. Are there any questions relating to this item? The next item is Sneed State's request that the Board of Trustees authorize the college to increase the rental rate for the college's dorms and increase the board or meal plan rate. The increases, if approved, would go into effect September 2023. The proposed dorm increase would be from $1,175 to $1,400 for a semi-private room per semester for fall and spring, from $1,500 to $2,200 for a private room for fall and spring, from $750 to $900 for a semi-private room and for $950 to $1,400 for a private room for the summer semester. The meal plan rate would increase from $842 to $950 per semester. The college anticipates that approximately $65,000 in additional revenue would be generated as a result of these increases. The additional revenue will help cover upgrades to the dorms, including the security system and an additional outdoor seating area at the cafeteria. Are there any questions relating to this item?
Thank you, David. We appreciate you taking us through those items. Next on the agenda, we have instruction, research, and development, of which there are four items. The first one is Northwest Shoals Community College. Would you come up?
Thank you, Chairman Rome, members of the Board, Chancellor Baker. Appreciate the opportunity to talk to you today. I believe we have a PowerPoint? All right. Fantastic. Before we begin, certainly, Mr. Davis and Mr. McEnally, congratulations. Thank you for your hard work on the Board of Trustees. It's been an honor working with you all and for you all here in the community college system. Appreciate all you've done for us. Want to talk to you very quickly about a program we would love to see at Northwest Shoals Community College, Alabama's oldest public community college, where it all began and where it's still going on. We're still working on that ebony, and I talked about that a little bit last night. But it is the Medical Laboratory Technology Program, and I will be brief as we advance through the slides. But do want to let you know that we have talked to our dual enrollment students. We've talked to the employers in our college footprint, and we do feel like this would be an excellent addition to our program. We'll go to the next slide. Quickly, as we go through this, we would like to start our proposed start date, if it is approved, is fall of '24. It's a five-semester program. It will culminate in an associate of applied science in MLT. There will be two faculty members that will act in accordance. One is the director and one is a faculty member. We already have $127,000 through a grant for equipment we feel like would be utilized in a very effective manner. Were we able to start the program? And obviously, you see, we will begin upon approval the accreditation process for this program. Oh, thank you very much. Thank you very much. I feel empowered now. Do want to let you know when we talk to our employers, we do feel like the job market is ripe for this program. You'll see the dates going through. There is only one year where we see a dip, and I believe that's 2025. But this was done through employer surveys, through area hospitals, physicians, offices, and private labs. There is a high demand for this program, and you also notice that the median annual income for the technicians and the technologists is $43,000-plus. So we feel like that's an excellent career. Right now, we have some excellent programs, obviously, in the state. One is 65 miles away, 174 at Calhoun and Wallace State. When we did talk to our dual enrollment students, 40% of the students who returned to survey had a great interest in this program, and we are confident that we would be able to fund the needs of our partners who support this program, and that indicate those are indicated here on this slide, hospitals, labs, et cetera. And we did have a great deal of support. You see the list of the entities that are supporting this program. And would love to answer any questions if you haven't at this time. Thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak with you. Look forward to getting you started. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Next, we have Lurleen B. Wallace Community College, Associate in Applied Science Salon and Spa Management.
Good morning, Chancellor Baker, members of the Board. Thank you for allowing us to present our program application for a new associate of applied science degree in salon and spa management. This is a four-semester degree program of 67 credit hours that will actually build upon a very well-established certificate in cosmetology that we already have. In addition, we have short certificates in aesthetics and nail technology, so we're well poised to offer this new degree program. This particular degree will add courses in salon management and entrepreneurship that we feel will better prepare our graduates for the business side of the field. And upon completion, graduates will be eligible to sit for the cosmetology examination through the Alabama Board of Cosmetology and Barbering. There is a clear need for the program. Hairdressers, hairstylists, cosmetologists, and barbers appear on the Region 6 ACCC demand occupations list with over 100 combined annual openings on average. And MC data likewise shows 5.2% job growth over the last two years in a cluster of counties within close proximity to LBWCC. In addition, we have very strong support from our local business and industry, as indicated in the letters that we submitted with our full application package. The cosmetic arts programs, cosmetology, aesthetics, and nail technology, have a shared advisory committee of over 40 employers who actively participate by hosting industry visits, doing guest lectures, and serving on the advisory committee to provide feedback on program improvement efforts. Internally, we've also seen tremendous growth in these programs in recent years with a 66% increase in headcount and a 55% increase in credit hour production since 2020. We've had over 65 graduates in just the past two years in these programs with an employment rate hovering between 90 and 100% and a licensure pass rate of 100% in these programs on the practical licensure examination. Program objectives include equipping students with the knowledge and skills to function safely and efficiently in a professional salon environment, preparing them to become skilled cosmetologists, hairdressers, or salon managers, and preparing them to sit for licensure with the Alabama Board of Cosmetology and Barbering. We have two full-time licensed faculty with over 40 years of combined experience already, and the college has already committed to posting another full-time position due to recent growth. There are really no budget implications because of the existing program curriculum. This would be a fairly minor expansion to offer more business classes to our existing cosmetology curriculum. So I'm happy to answer any questions about the program if you have them at this time.
Thanks. We appreciate it. Thank you. Next, we have Enterprise State Community College Associate Degree in Nursing.
Good morning. Congratulations, Chairman, and to Mr. Davis and Mr. McEnally. Thank you for your leadership over the last eight years. Enterprise State was one of the last community colleges in the state to start a nursing program. We started our LPN program a little over a year ago, and to do that is no small task. And to be here today asking for your consideration for an R-N program in just a little over a year, I'm certainly proud of our team. I'd like for you to know that we had 48 LPN students enrolled this spring semester. So I would like to just recognize Ms. Catherine Hewitt and Amy Phillips are two full-time nursing faculty. They've been a dynamic duo. Amy is celebrating her son's graduation this week from Auburn University, and she couldn't be here this morning. But I would just like to commend their dedication, their commitment. This is a big task, and I think we have some of the best and most dedicated. Their commitment to our college is unmatched. And if Amy was here, she would tell you that it's a team effort. And Chancellor, I'd like to recognize a couple of your staff who have certainly given us a tremendous amount of support. Kenneth Kirkland, who is now leading the charge at Calhoun, and Dr. Klein, Barry May in the Workforce Development Office, and also Boone Canard, who helped support and advocated for the legislative line item for standalone LPN programs that has certainly been instrumental. Without any of those pieces, we're not here today asking for your consideration. Each morning, or each time I make a trip to Montgomery or Troy and head north, I go by the new Veterans Home construction site that is being built in Enterprise, Alabama. And to know that we're going to get to play a part in providing the skilled workforce for such a deserving facility certainly makes me proud as president. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Dr. Anna Head, our Dean of Instruction.
Good morning, Chancellor Baker and the Board. Thank you so much for having us this morning. On behalf of Enterprise State Community College, I am presenting our proposal for the Associate of Applied Science in Nursing. ESCC has experienced success with its LPN program, as you've heard, meeting the Alabama Board of Nursing requirement of NCLCPN pass rates in the first calendar year, which was 2022. And we are excited for this opportunity to present a proposal to expand our nursing program. Along with the foundation built by our PN program, there are several other reasons why ESCC believes that the addition of an ADN program is both a viable and necessary step for our community, and these are as follows. The total supply of RNs decreased by more than 100,000 from 2020 to 2021, the largest drop observed over the past four decades. According to a 2020 National Nursing Workforce Survey conducted by the National Council of State Boards of Nursing, the average age for an RN is, like trucking, 52 years old, which may signal a large wave of shortages over the next 15 years. The U.S. Census Bureau reported that by 2034, there will be 77 million people aged 65 years and older compared to 76.5 million under the age of 18. With larger numbers of older adults, there will be an increased need for geriatric care, including care for individuals with chronic diseases and comorbidities. Amplified by the pandemic, insufficient staffing is raising the stress level of nurses, impacting job satisfaction, and driving many nurses to leave the profession. Although we cannot change the healthcare environment, we can produce competent nurses ready to fill that void. Higher nurse staffing levels were associated with fewer deaths, lower failure-to-rescue incidents, lower rates of infection, and shorter hospital stays. Insufficient nurse staffing was related to higher patient mortality rates. In addition to these statistics that point to the need for more nurses nationwide, there is also a need to increase the number of nursing programs in Alabama. According to the 2021 ABN Annual Report, the reason that 50% of students who applied to nursing school in Alabama and met criteria but were not able to enroll was due to the following: an insufficient number of faculty, an insufficient number of clinical supervisors, limits on enrollment for accredited programs. limits on enrollment for accredited programs, and lack of clinical sites. Currently, ESCC has eight clinical affiliation agreements and will gain at least one more before the onset of the program. These clinical sites will meet the curriculum requirements for an ADN program. Further, ESCC has procured six letters of support and is in the process of obtaining more. Finally, it is important to emphasize the demand for nurses specific to the local area. According to a 2021 Alabama Labor Market Report, RN job postings ranked as the third-highest health-wanted posting for Coffee County. RN openings in the ESCC area as of May 1st include Andalusia Health with 15 full-time positions and five PRN, Troy Regional Medical Center with eight full-time and 10 PRN, Wiregrass Medical Center with 15 positions, Medical Center Enterprise with 19 full-time and five part-time, Flowers Hospital with 70 full-time, 12 part-time positions to include satellite offices and outpatient facilities, and Dale Medical Center with 19 positions. We thank you for your time and consideration of our proposal this morning, and if you have questions, of course.
I'd just like to say, if we've learned anything over the last couple of years, almost three now, of the importance of having a good and vibrant and flexible healthcare system and those who are on the front line, I think we have learned, are learning that lesson. And so we're glad to see a proposal such as this come that could add even more folks into that pipeline to pursue one of the most honorable careers that could be, and that is caring for other folks. Thank you. Next up, we have Central Alabama Community College Associate in Applied Science in Marine Maintenance Technology.
Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it. Got a PowerPoint as well. While they're pulling that up, I just want to say congratulations, Chairman Rome, members of the Board, Chancellor Baker. I too, it seems like a lifetime, but thank you so much, Blake and Milton, for all the great things you've done for the Board, for the state of Alabama, and all the students that are across the state. So thank you so much. Our proposal is to start a new applied associate in applied science for degree for marine technology, as you see in front of you. A little bit about our process. This is just a glance of our service area. We're very blessed to have a lot of water, from rivers to lakes, a lot of marinas. These are marinas that are on the water. There's a lot of other dry dock area spaces that will hire our students as well. Looking at some data through Lightcast, just some recent data, we're way above the national average, about three times above the national average in a comparison to a size of what we represent. We have 101 job openings annually. The average area would have about 34 in this size. It reflects about 9.7% at the regional level, 5.4%, and then 3.8% at the national level for the next three years. The median wage is about $41,000, even though our students start a lot more than that because we started this program already as a non-credit program. They're actually hiring them as interns at $15 an hour with no experience. So the demand is huge out there. So as I said, we started this program as a non-credit program back in summer of '21 with major donations from a lot of our suppliers and our companies that are wanting us to do it. So very little out-of-pocket expense from Central Alabama Community College, a lot of experience from them helping us shape our curriculum, to giving us equipment, boats, engines, you name it. It's been very, very exciting. They're really wanting us to get this program going as a credit program. And so they helped us define what that credit program would look like, and this is just a real high level. But we've embedded three short certificates in this as well, from Marine Technician Fundamentals, Marine Technician Service, and then MSSC Short Certificate, which also has OSHA 10 credential as well. This has been blessed by about 20 different industries in our area, and so we feel very confident that this will be great. We ask you to review this and approve this. It'll be the first one in the state that'll be accredited program. The other one is the closest to us is in Panama City. We think there's a huge demand for this. The intern program, I think this is going to be a fundamental work-and-learn type of program, internship program. These students are, go straight to work after they complete this program, and we're very excited to offer this. So please review this as your consideration. I'll answer any questions that you might have.
I'll just make a comment presently, and up in, on Smith Lake and up on the Tennessee River Basin, the entire basin, the shortage is real there, too. So glad to see you doing this.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We'll now ask Mark Salmon to come up, and we'll talk about facilities, starting with Bevel State Fayette Campus Nursing Lab relocation and renovation.
Good morning, Board members and Chancellor Baker. We have three items for consideration this morning. The first one is at Bevel, and this is located at the Fayette Campus. We are looking at this location here as a recommendation for renovating space for the nursing program. In this particular building in the Bevel Center, the space is being repurposed to modernize and to focus on the needs that nursing has. You can see some, you can see from the renderings and the schematics here a little bit of the changes that the program will experience as we move this project forward. The attempt on this is, again, to allow the nursing program to consolidate its efforts and then also expose them and modernize their space to enhance the program that they're offering there for the students. We do expect to take bids on the 8th of June. It'll come back, and we'll have these available for the Board to take action and to consider at the next board meeting. Board members, any questions about Bevel and the nursing program? The next one that we have is at Trenton. The college is looking to do some things with their monuments and their digital signage that they have on campus. This is going to impact both the Patterson and the Trenton sites. As we look at the signage for the campuses, there are, this is essentially the sign that's been developed that will go at the Trenton campus. And then the other one that we included in your packet is the location for Patterson. We invited the architects to take as much as they could and adapt a little bit of the architecture between these two signs to reflect a little bit of the campus. The campuses are very different, but we felt like that we needed to establish and put a stake in the ground to begin to reflect the differences. And so the differences are subtle, but they, again, tie in with the architecture. These boards also have a digital feature as well that the college will be able to use to help market and promote events and other programs that are happening at the campuses. Bids for these, we expect to have later this month, and the results of those bids will come back to the Board at the next board meeting in June. Any questions about the digital imaging or the signage, monument signs for both the Patterson and the Trenton campus? The last project, Board members, for consideration is also at Trenton State. They are looking at the installation of some security, upgrading their security systems for cameras, card access and swipes, and one that I'd never heard of before, which is thermal imaging cameras. And so as we look at those features being added, the attempt will be to locate this technology across all both campuses and make it available for both buildings. We do expect that these bids will come back to us and be available for the Board to take action at the June board meeting. Funding for this is her funds that they do need to quickly try to expand as quickly as possible to be able to move those obligations forward. Board members, any questions about security and the solution for both the Trenton and the Patterson campus? Thank you, Board members.
Thank you, Mark. Well, those are all the items that are on our agenda for this current work session. So unless there's anything else we need to cover, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.